The good stuff.
Thank you.
As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order, ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business protatonically, for it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, one minor adjustment. Under section 12, those session, we'd also like to add a reference for legal advice, NCGS 143, 318 dot 11A3.
All right, I have that noted, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion.
Second?
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And motion carries. Next, under administrative items will be the Clayton for You.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Tonight, we bring to you another episode of Clayton for You. Tonight's episode features the Clayton Center in honor of National Arts and Humanities Month.
The state of Clayton for you, the spotlight shines on the Clayton Center.
A beautifully renovated music, entertainment, and event venue, the Clayton Center offers an exciting, ongoing series of concerts, comedy, and family shows. Check out the See It Live schedule at the ClaytonCenter.com. You can also become a See It Live member and receive great benefits like ticket discounts, pre-sale opportunities, and more. Tickets to all Clayton Center events are available at our box office. We are located at 111 East Second Street in downtown Clayton, just one block away from Main Street. We're open noon to five, Monday through Friday. When you come out to a show, you may interact with one of our scene stealers. This energetic group of volunteers puts on quite a show of their own as they greet visitors, scan tickets, and usher patrons into our 600-seat auditorium. In addition to the auditorium, we have our four meeting rooms and a gorgeous lobby perfect for social gatherings. Celebrate any occasion with us, including recitals and performances, business and community events, and weddings and parties. Additional information about our shows, our spaces, current riddle rates, and amenities are available online. And seen.
That's a wrap. Thanks for watching, and be sure to follow us on social media to keep up with Clayton for You and other town updates.
That's awesome, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm. Tonight, in our special presentations, council will be hearing from the Downtown Development Association Council annual report, and I'd like to give the floor to Kristy Thompson, and welcome.
Hello. Hey, guys, my name is Kristy Thompson. I'm currently serving as your chair for the Downtown Development Advisory Board. So just a little bit about us. So the purpose of our board is to protect and enhance the downtown district. We also educate citizens within our downtown as well as our stakeholders. We also promote downtown Clayton as a place to invest. One of our main purposes is also to preserve and enhance the character and protect the historic significance of our buildings, facilities, spaces within our downtown district, and we also serve as an advisory board to council as well as our advisory board committees. I just want to introduce to you our 2024 board members. We have myself, Greg, David, Paul, Marty, Lila, Katie, Andre, and Ms. Erin. So those are your current board members. For also, in addition to having our board, we also have our subcommittees. So the subcommittees include our promotions, which is really to help support with event creation. Our organization committee helps with volunteer recruitment. Our design committee supports facade grants, promotes individual business education, and also helps manage our historic downtown initiatives. Economic vitality works for to develop business partnerships. We also work with business advocacy, and we coordinate with our town staff. This year, this past year, we implemented our vibrancy grants, which included 20 A-frame signs to help promote and support vibrancy throughout downtown. We also supported the implementation of our social district, which launched on July 11th. We implemented and won an award for our downtown map, and we also supported and helped define our downtown master plan. Throughout the 2024 season and 2023 season, we distributed over $21,000 in facade grants, which supported and also led to an investment of nearly $70,000 in facade improvements throughout downtown. Some of the ones highlighted here are Boulevard, Bernie's, and Fair Game. We also raised over $16,000 in sponsorship dollars that went back into community events and downtown initiatives. We just recently finished up our second annual barbecue challenge, where we hosted 31 KCBS cook teams from all over the United States, 15 local breweries, and we sold over 600 tickets that led back into downtown dollars. In addition to that, we're we hosted our first Fall in Love with Downtown Awards Night, which included some really phenomenal businesses that we wanted to support and highlight. Our Rising Star Awards went to Better Days and Snacks Provisions, the You Wowed Us Award event. Our award went to Paul and the Barbecue Challenge Task Force, Revival for their burlesque show, Odd One Out for the improvements to their retail offerings, and the Mayor's Downtown Task Force for giving us much-needed parking throughout downtown. Best New Business was given to La Di Da. Downtown contributor was to the Johnston County Visitors Bureau. The Carroll Building won the downtown design for its improvements, and then Business of the Year was given to the Design House. We'd love for you guys to save the date for this year. It's going to be February 18th, 2025, pardon me, next year, and that'll be hosted again at Brick and Mortar. It's a really great event and a really great time. We also hosted and supported our downtown concert series, where we added two local openers to this year's acts. This year, we saw guest participation at 1,000 per concert, where the 2023 average was right at 700, so great improvement in our attendance for this past year. And then looking forward into 2025, we're onboarding new board members. We currently have open applications for that. We're going to continue to have a strong focus on our downtown strategic plan, and then we're going to continue our partnerships and collaborations with other advisory boards, and then we're hoping to implement and grow our facade grant and vibrancy grant programs. And that is your annual review.
Wow. You know, I think back to the days when we first developed a downtown development association and the passion that that inaugural group brought to Clayton, North Carolina, and to see where it is today. Just to be honest, it deserves a tremendous, a tremendous amount of a round of applause. Thank you. And I will just reiterate what Kristy shared is that they are looking for new board members and volunteers, and obviously, you can already tell that this isn't, this is a working board. This isn't a just come and have a beverage board. This group is dedicated to Clayton, North Carolina, and creates tremendous tangible results, and I want to acknowledge all of you for that, and thank you on behalf of the town of Clayton.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you. Okay, up next, under public hearing, is the town of Clayton 2024 Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Scott Barnard. I'm your Parks and Recreation Director, and it is my pleasure this evening to be introducing or reintroducing Sarah Burrows with Sage Design, who has led this effort with the town of Clayton's staff, advisory board members, and most importantly, the public. This is a, this is a rich plan, and that is largely due to the involvement of all of our citizens who have contributed both in surveys, involvement at individual events, as well as participation in Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meetings and other events throughout the community, communicating with myself, my staff, and probably most importantly, Sarah and her team. But without further ado, I'm going to hand the torch to Sarah for the presentation of tonight's Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, or excuse me, Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Awesome.
Thank you, Scott. Again, my name is Sarah Burrows with Sage Design, and I just want to thank you guys for your commitment to this process. It's been an ongoing process for over a year, and you have really committed to a solid and robust engagement effort with your community, and because of that, I feel like we have a really actionable plan. There were over 1,000 points of engagement through going to the community center and events, and the upcoming Harvest Festival that we went to last year, sitting with you and the staff and the other boards that help guide your community. And what I want to discuss today are outcomes from the work session that we had with you a few weeks ago, that just really highlight how the plan is constructed and some of the really unique opportunities that have come from it. So the plan is organized to align with your community goals and some of the efforts that you've put forth strategically in some of your other planning areas. And so the whole plan is focused on creating a connected community, ensuring some of the things that were just discussed about economic vitality are incorporated, continuing the efforts you already conduct with environmental stewardship, celebration of arts and culture, and then continuing to really focus for your community on health and wellness. That's one of the things that brings people to the town of Clayton, and so there's really a strong invested interest from your community members on making sure that that continues. So the plan is then broken down into several different areas to make sure that it aligns with state and national best practices, and we look at recommendations for facilities, connectivity, programs, staff, and land acquisition. And your community is really engaged in parks, and I think it's very, very important to highlight on your executive summary sheet that 87% of your community feel very strongly about the positivity that parks brings to the town of Clayton. That is something that is above a national average benchmark and very important to recognize. The other thing that's really high on the metric scale is that 97% of the respondents of the survey from your community felt that parks add value. And I think as decision makers, that's really important to acknowledge that those, those are really strong numbers, and it's very exciting to see as you move forward with some of the things that we've discovered in this process. On the backside of your executive summary sheet, we go into greater detail, and I am just going to highlight some of the things that have really come forward as important aspects of this plan for your residents, and that includes some of the elements under facilities. Your residents would really like to see additional opportunities for outdoor adventure and recreation and accessing the Neuse River, which you guys are so lucky to have that comes right through your community. You've done a beautiful job with the trails along the, along the river, and now there's greater interest in being able to access the river itself. There's also a really important element that came out of this plan, and I know because of what you hear as a council on a, on a biweekly basis is growth and the impacts that growth has on your community and needing to keep up Parks and Recreation Services, that influences a lot of the outcomes and findings of this plan as it relates to facilities, connectivity, and your staff and your programs. It's just that people love Clayton, and they're moving here, and that growth number is increasing, and so it's going to be really critical as a town that you do what you need to do to keep up the numbers in providing the level of service that the residents would like to see. Connectivity came forward as one of the key elements, and there were three highlighted trails recommended in the plan as priorities, really wanting to get Municipal Park and Donald Sinclair, Clyde Sinclair Park to downtown and to the district that we just heard about, all the exciting things going on downtown. Folks wanting to get from East Clayton Park into downtown and to the Neuse River, and then wanting to get from the community center and community park across 70 and into downtown. So there's really a strong desire to continue those connections so that you have in, an opportunity to get into town and out of town, either as a pedestrian or on a bicycle and not necessarily your car. So those are your connectivity priorities. Special events are something that your community really is engaged with, and they would like to see more of them. So there are a whole host of opportunities that the town is providing successfully, and there are a lot of programs that are waitlisted because there is such strong demand, and so they would like to see an increase in opportunities for the programs and special events that are provided with the town. And as you know from the work session, there's a direct relationship between the programs that can be offered and the staff, and so we need to make sure that as you continue to grow and you look at providing more parkland, more services, and more programs, that there's a commensurate staff to be able to provide those, those opportunities. So those are our key elements in the plan itself, and I would like to just open it up to questions and follow up to the planning effort that you guys have been engaged with over the last year.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions?
Appreciate the plan. There's a lot of visual aids in that plan, and it makes it easy to read and people look at and understand. I mean, obviously, tonight, and then in some of the meetings that we've had, you've expressed the, the growth, which is true, we're having a lot of growth, and we have a lot more that already is already in the books, but financially, how do you see us being able to make some of these things come to fruition that, you know, that we need as we're a growing community and a growing town?
I think one of the elements in the plan, at the back of the plan, there are an outline of tools that are available for funding, and I think because of the immediate near-term and long-term need that we've revealed through this planning process, you're going to have to take a variety of those approaches. I don't think one approach is going to work. I think you're going to have to take the, the tools that are presented and that you have used in the past to approach meeting the demand. I think it's going to really take the diversity of approaches to try and keep up with the level of service you're providing.
Awesome. Anyone else? Well, first of all, I think we should get you a burgundy shirt that says Clayton Park and Recreation.
I feel like I've done the wrong thing tonight.
You and, and the company have been amazing partners to work with, and to my Park and Recreation team, let me say on behalf of this town council and the town of Clayton, we cannot thank you enough either. You know, I just gave heartfelt kudos to the downtown development for all the hard work that they have done, but you know, Clayton is the premier community for active families, and Clayton is a place that people want to live, work, and play, and your job is to make sure that they get to play, and you all do an outstanding job with the funding that you have, with the vision that you share, and the way that you execute everything on behalf of the town of Clayton Park and Recreation, and I think that these guys deserve a wonderful round of applause. I'm very appreciative also that the results that came in showed that the level of commitment the town of Clayton and, and the citizens of Clayton and our region, how much they appreciate Park and Recreation, because to your point earlier, that is an extremely high number, and it exceeds the national level, and it really shows the passion and the appreciation that citizens of Clayton have for Park and Recreation.
It does.
We thank you.
And thank you for your commitment in the process. I appreciate it. I think our next steps are to come before the planning board in a week and, and give them an update on the process, and then come back in November for approval.
Awesome. So this has been prescribed as a public hearing, and I'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. No one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing. And we will table this until the November 4th, 2024 meeting for action, per recommendation from the planning board. All right. Thank you all so much for joining us, and I appreciate the good work. Up next on the agenda is the 2024-92RZ Triangle Coffee Shop.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This is a rezoning request. It's a conventional rezoning that's occurring across the street here on the corner. The request is to change the zoning from OFI to downtown neighborhood core. It's DTNC. The property is 0.13 acres. It's been rented before as a single-family residence. There's a desire from the applicants to use this building and the site for a commercial purpose. The property's been posted. We went to the planning board last month and is now before you all. We've done our public noticing, and we're here before you. The property is, feature land use map is downtown core. It's going to be allowing all kinds of uses allowed in that district, so there's no conditions, there's no ties to the use, so someone can go in there and use any of the uses that are permitted by right, including some office, retail. It has been expressed that the desire is to convert this into a coffee shop, but all the other uses would be allowed. So this was, was before the planning board on September 23rd, received the recommendation for approval. Staff is recommending approval of this project as well, motion one of your consistency statement sheet. I'm available for any questions, and the applicants are here also. It's a brief presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Go ahead, Ms. Archer.
Thank you for the presentation, and just because we haven't heard a rezoning in quite a while, I was just going to kind of ask the standard question of of ask the standard question of when it's just a rezoning like this, you're just kind of looking at, does it fit with the adjacent parcels? Does it make sense for that zoning to be there rather than the proposed or suggested use, right? It's just kind of, does that zoning category fit in that particular area?
Yeah, that's correct. So when we were having our pre-application conference with the applicants, staff does an analysis, we look at the area and we kind of decide, okay, should this be a conditional rezoning request where we're concerned about the site, the building, some neighborhood considerations? Or is it something that could be a limited use type of conditional rezoning where you're restricting the number of uses that could be allowed? Staff felt comfortable to proceed with the conventional rezoning. So that would be consistent with the surrounding district. So the future land use map supports it with the downtown core and the adjacent parcels would also be downtown core. So this would make that whole block there pretty much downtown neighborhood core. So yes, that is the analysis that we've done. It's a conventional rezoning. So there is pretty straightforward. You change one color to another color on the map.
But just for clarification, it's the only parcel that is not like the rest, the adjoining properties?
Correct. Yeah, I'll go back to my zoning map here. You can see at some point, this was in OFI, oh my gosh, I'm sorry, I'm going too quick, an OFI zone district. And the UDO actually does not allow single family detached dwelling in OFI. So the house was being rented technically as a legal non-conforming use. So if they were to go back to a single family residence, they'd have to then rezone because I want to say DTNC does not allow a single family detached. So we're pretty much seeing that corner is going to be a commercial type of use. The amount of the applicants can maybe speak a little bit more about some of the other codes you're going to have to meet. It would be exempt from parking. There are some building code to change that residential type structure into a commercial type structure.
Okay, Ms. Archer.
But just to be clear, you know, any kind of questions about the future use, the building codes, the parking and all that, you really don't consider those in a rezoning decision? It's a conversation you can have, but they're not really part of the analysis and reaching a decision. Nothing, I'm just clarifying it because I know we haven't heard one in a while and new people and council and that sort of thing. So yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That is 100% correct. We are definitely always doing, most likely bringing conditional rezonings and those have ties to the concept plan and promises. This is literally just saying, it is just changing from one district to the other, no strings attached.
All right, anyone else? All right, this has been noted as a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening to the mayor and all of the members of the council. My name is M.L. Mentor. I have lived here about 52 years now. Long before most of you were born. But I have a couple of questions and I would appreciate if you just entertained. I'm not here to actually complain. I'm here to get information. So if you would be so kind as to...
If you will be so kind as to lower that microphone a little bit so we can make sure the people watching on the camera can hear what you have to say as well? Thank you, sir. That's perfect.
All right, is that better?
That's way better, yes.
All right. My property is the small strip of land right beside the proposed coffee shop. It lies between the coffee shop on the corner and what is that, a tobacco sales place there? Just the other side of the spot. So it's a small lot. And again, I'd like to be, in all my years, I've never had a problem with getting along with the goings on of the town. And I certainly don't want to start now. But I would like to get some information just to kind of put my mind at ease. By the way, let me compliment you on the town. I can't wait to see this 12-story skyscraper going up in Clayton. You're doing a lot of things and who knows what comes next? So let's keep it going. Let's put Raleigh to shame, what do you say? The first thing is the parking. And I kind of understand that there's not going to be an issue with parking. And I was concerned about that because I've been having some parking problems with that small strip of property, especially when it comes to things like just cutting the grass. I don't have a driveway access off the street anyway. So it's not designed for that. It's parking, it's not a parking area. But what we do have there is we have grass and we also have water lines and sewage lines coming through that property out to the street. And so my concern is not having any interruptions along that line along with the cutting of the grass that I've had problems with. I've had to drive my lawnmower on the other gentleman's property in order to get on my property to cut the grass. And so that's one of the things I'd like to just question and how we're going to go about doing that. And sometimes there has been a food truck that parks out there near the curb and that blocks my property off completely. Now, I don't know how long or whether you have contracts or leases or how those things come, but it will happen like intermittently. It's not a long time thing, but it usually happens right about the day I decide I'm going to cut my grass that day. And food being in the truck and then I'm blowing grass everywhere is just not a good scenario. And so again, I'd like to make sure that your parking is not going to be a problem for me because I certainly don't want to be blowing grass in the food either. So that's just another one of my, one of my questions. Other than that, I've already mentioned the parking, the unauthorized parking on that side of the street. And I can see if you're using the parking lots that are around, there's plenty of parking, if you're going to do it that way. I just don't know exactly how you're going to handle that. And so that's my question as to where we go from here. It's my little lot, I've had it since 1981. And I would like to make sure there is no problem with the new business coming or any infringement on my property. As a matter of fact, I've even had people through the night that would drive across the curb and it has damaged my sewer cleanout next to the sidewalk. So these are kinds of things that I would like to just present. And if you can help me solve those problems, then I will be more than happy to agree and concur with what you have already decided.
So I will jump in and then I will ask for experts to clarify anything that the mayor doesn't get on par. So tonight is really about just the zoning. And they are requesting that the zoning be the same as your property and all the rest of the properties that touch it. And if that is passed and it is rezoned, then if there is any future development done to that property, all of that submittal will have to go before the planning board. The public will have an opportunity to express their concerns, all of that. So tonight is really just, will we rezone it or not? When it comes to your property located beside of the property that we're looking at, have the request to rezone, absolutely, we should keep in mind that all of your infrastructure to your property on the main street and Fayetteville Street is there. And hearing that you have already had some experiences where people have trampled over and created damage, that's duly noted in the record too. So I think that will be something that is further discussed should any information come back to the town after this rezoning to discuss what improvements or modifications they want to make to the current property. So as an adjoining property owner, you will be notified by the town of Clayton what the requests are going to be for that said property so that you have an opportunity to express your concerns at that point in time as it pertains to people parking on my lot, people damaging, people not realizing there's infrastructure on that. Because when I ride by, I think it looks like a vacant lot. I had no idea, Mr. Mentor, that there was actually infrastructure that serviced your other property. Okay? And most people don't realize that. But there are some things I think that we as a town of Clayton can do to help facilitate that that's not going to happen to the best of our ability. When it comes to the food truck, I'm thinking that you're talking about how the food truck sits on Fayetteville Street, like parallel, like to the sideline of your property on the corner of Fayetteville and Main. Is that where your concern is?
The property is on 102 Second Street?
Probably referring to the concert series when we had the food trucks during that.
Now, we're right now, and yes, there is, I kind of look the other way on that because there is no problem with the goings on of the town, such as the problem that's coming up, the program you guys is coming up now like on the 27th.
The Harvest Festival.
Yes. Now that, there's no problem, although I realize that as long as those people come in and at least give me driving access and driveway, then I have no problem with that because, you know, it's a very short time.
So not only for your access points on the main street to your property, but also the access point that you have on Fayetteville Street that services the rear.
Fayetteville, yes.
Yes.
And then at the four-way stop, coming back to the left again, that small piece property there between the two buildings, that's where I've had some obstructions with the sewer. The water lines come out there. My water meter is right there on the curb. And so I'm concerned about that. Right now, we have that sewer cleanout right there, that's been broken. And so there's no cap on it like it usually is. So I try to look the other way as much as I can because again, you know, I try to be a conforming citizen, although it hurts a little bit when I have to pay my taxes. But other than that, I would like to have those kinds of things fixed and in good working order.
Yes. And that's, I think that's well understood and documented for tonight's record. Do you have any objections to the rezoning to make it zoned, what all of the other parcels of land are zoned?
Is that this property, my property and the next one over too? Is that what we're doing?
So currently, I'm under the understanding that all of the properties that you own across the street are already the zoning that this group is asking for this house to become.
Oh, okay.
So the corner property is the only thing that is not zoned, what your property is and what your lot is.
All right.
And they are asking for it to be the same.
It might be helpful to bring that map up again to show everything in blue and show that all the property is on like that so he can see the visual of that again.
Yes. There we go. Do we have a pointer? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can you show us where his property is?
Yes. So Mr. Mentor's property is, let's go back up to the blue TDC, DTC. Okay, so the corner property, not that one, the corner property that we're talking about rezoning, that property is zoned differently than your property, Mr. Mentor, which is that big square and rectangle and the part that comes to Second Street.
Right.
Yes. So your property is rezoned, your property, excuse me, is zoned one way. And the property that is asking for rezoning is currently zoned something else. So they are asking for all, for their property to be zoned like what yours is on both sides.
Okay.
Yes. Now, if that zoning goes through by the town council tonight, any development that they do on the corner where it says DTNC with the black stars, any development that takes place there or redevelopment or modifications thereof will have to come back before the town of Clayton, town council will have to go before the planning board. Adjoining property owners will have to be notified as to what's going on with that property. And you will have an opportunity to share any of your concerns at that time. And that's really probably the better time. And you would want to have it in the record at that time that all of your infrastructure that serves your property is directly located to where the remodeling would take place.
All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and we'll let the manager chime in.
I was gonna say, I just want to confirm with our planning staff, with the new UDO, depending upon what use the applicant would be looking for, they may not have to come back before the board if it is as of right based on the zoning that they're requesting. So I just want to confirm with Conrad that that is the case.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. So the permitted use table that we have in the new UDO, it has all the uses would be allowed by right that are allowed in the downtown neighborhood core. So there are uses that would require council approval would be those that are conditional rezoning or if the project, the property was to be rezoned to another conventional district. So this rezoning would effectively allow the property to be used for any of the permitted uses by right in that zone district.
So then how do we protect the adjoining property owners?
You protect the adjoining property owners by, trying to think of a good way.
The UDO itself does. So that permitted use table, that was a lot of that discussion through the development of the UDO was what types of things do we see allowable within different areas of town? And then obviously applying the correct zoning to those locations. So the uses that are allowed within that table currently assigned to the DTNC are things that the planning board and you all have already discussed being reasonable to be in those locations. Some of the conditional things, again, those are the items that the boards, you know, and through the council's approval of the UDO decided that you all would want to be able to see that again if somebody was proposing that specific use. But correct me if I'm wrong, for this particular property right now, I believe they're attempting to do the, they want to do the rezoning because they want to reuse the property, redevelop the property to be utilized as a coffee shop. And I'm assuming Conrad that that would be allowable on the table. So their next steps, if the rezoning goes through tonight, their follow-up approvals will actually be all administrative. They'll all go through the planning staff and be at the staff level approval.
Is, that's about as clear as mud to me.
Yeah, I know. Me too.
Okay.
But, uh.
And in terms of protecting the neighbors, I'm sorry, Mr. Man, I know that, that the whole public process is really the intent to give folks and to tackle what Rich said, the UDO has the requirements that we can review administratively, um, and we just would do the notification like you were, like you were articulating, should that, any use that is not permitted in that district would have to go back to the council. So that's how we would protect, protect the neighbors, adjacent neighbors, Mr. Mentor himself, um, including the town. We would just do the proper notifications, but, um, otherwise we're just looking all those uses and, and staff doing the review of those potential uses to, we review those uses and we make sure, okay, what uses could be a conflict here that would be otherwise allowed by right? And to echo what Rick, Rich was saying was that's what, um, that's why we're recommending that just be a conventional rezoning. We don't find that the uses and the UDO itself does that kind of inherent natural protection without having to go back to council for another conditional rezoning. So for instance, if this was going to be a duplex or multifamily project, that would require council, council review through a rezoning, conditional rezoning.
Uh, my final statement is again, I didn't mean to bring that up, and that is access to my property off Fayetteville Street during the festival. I usually don't have a problem at other times, but in that case, um, there are quite a few trucks there, two or three trucks there on that side, on my, my side of the property. Don't mind that. But again, I do have tenants in it and those tenants need to have access to their apartments. And if we can get that both front side, both the main street side and the Fayetteville street side, then I'm good to go and I wish you well.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, good evening, members of the board. You all know who I am. I'm John Scarpa. I'm the bad penny that shows up all the time. And I just wanted to, uh, ask that you pass, that you grant this, uh, rezoning. Uh, the gentleman who expressed concerns about his property was well, well spoken, well meaning, but I think it would be unfair to the applicant not to pass this zoning, uh, amendment because it's conforming with all the property that's surrounding it. In, in addition though, uh, I think the gentleman should be aware that, uh, if there's any trespass upon his property, he has remedies at law and equity. And so that he's fully protected by that and he should be. And I, I would appreciate, uh, the opportunity to, uh, address you again later on. I unfortunately didn't bring any change with me, but I'll throw my two cents in later.
That's perfect. Thank you. Mr. Mentor.
During the festival, may I have like some cones or something across that little property next to the coffee shop? I don't need to have cars parked on the lot. I didn't feel that part up. And I would appreciate it, you know, all the parking space we do have in that general area, it would certainly help me out. And who knows, I might even be able to cut my grass up.
That's it. Yes. All right. We will make a note to see if we can't get a couple of orange cones to prevent people from pulling in on that property to park.
Very good.
Yes. Yes, sir. All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this? All right. No one wishing to speak. I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their deliberation. Ms. Case.
For me, obviously there's a lot going on with this, um, this, this rezoning. Personally, I think the rezoning and what they're, um, looking to do is, is different than maybe street closures and stuff like that. There's a whole different process for the street closures. I think, I mean, obviously working with you, Mr. Manners, is a good, good situation to, to inform and educate on that. Um, a lot of what you're talking about is a case of just being a good neighbor, right? Uh, we have examples where we have residential housing and also houses that have been upfitted for, uh, retail space, commercial use downtown already, and that seems to work fairly, uh, fairly well. And then, um, regarding some of the damage and stuff, I've had some issues where people damaged my personal property, uh, driving on, on, on the, the land and everything else. And you know, there's, um, legal or insurance, uh, reasons or rationale to kind of combat, combat, combat that. So, but for me, I mean, I see no issue with this rezoning. I think it's a testament that us as a downtown, as a community need more retail, more legitimate commercial space downtown. I'm happy to see this project come through. Um, I wish, wish you all very well. You're not very far from my house and I'm happy to venture out there, um, and get a, definitely get a cup of coffee. So anyway, I'm in favor of it and I just hope that landowners downtown see the, the need for commercial space and, and feel that need for future, for future purposes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to echo everything Councilman Casey had said, and then, um, just state for my, my record here that, um, I believe that the application has met all the criteria for rezoning as presented in the published agenda. So I'm happy to make a motion if there's no further comment.
Mr. Sands.
Yeah, so I don't see any problem. Of course, everything falls in with the rezoning. I guess my concern as we continue to, uh, look at, uh, approving these things like this that it's the same old thing as far as, um, parking, um, or a coffee shop. What does that, what that, what does that look like if that is to, to be, I know we're not making the decision on that, uh, tonight. So, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the rezoning, but, um, I do, I think the gentleman did bring some things to light about his property that I hope tonight that we become aware of, I'll talk to him with the, with the town manager and how we look to, uh, as we partner with the, uh, chamber on the Harvest Fest and those things like that. Uh, because, uh, again, shame on me, um, wasn't aware or didn't pay attention to the extent should have, uh, that, you know, there's people in there and there's some exits in and out, and I know where that, as I bring it up here on the map, the food truck that he's referring to and sitting there during events and things like that. So we just be more cognizant of events and things that we hold that there's somebody right there, you know, living in there and that needing as far as access in and out.
Thanks, sir.
Want to say something?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I too, I'm in favor of the rezoning, but I also wanted to make sure we keep in mind of the request of Mr. Mentor as well. So I just want to make sure that goes on the record.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Ms. Archer.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Um, I, I recommend approval of, um, adoption of ordinance 2024-10-01. And then I will go ahead and enter some things into the record if that, what this red motion sheet is about. Okay. Um, I make a motion to approve this rezoning request based on consistency with the future land use map and the adopted 2045 comprehensive growth plan in that the property is designated as downtown core and the future land use map goal LU1 moves to preserve Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in appropriate areas. Policy LU 1.3 seeks to encourage non-residential land in, uh, land uses in areas consistent with the future land use map. Goal DT1 promotes quality adaptive reuse and infill development projects in downtown while preserving historic character. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive growth plan encourages commercial uses in this area. The request is compatible with existing zoning and land uses in the area.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 2024-10-01 with consistency statement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next, under old business is the ECIA transmission improvements, and we will give the floor to project manager Louis Duffy.
Mayor, uh, members of council, Louis Duffy, project manager, Town of Clayton. Uh, this past Tuesday, the town received three bids for the ECIA transmission and pump station improvements project, which is the last component of the larger overall program. Um, the three bids were from Park Construction, Garnie Construction and Moffett Pipe. Uh, Moffett was the apparent little bidder, uh, in the price of $18,2,812. This was significantly lower than the engineer's estimate for the project, so that was good news. Uh, we received the letter of recommendation from the engineer, um, that essentially says all the components of the proposal checked out, signed everything, ticked all the boxes. So tonight I am asking for approval to tentatively award to Moffett Pipe so that we can proceed with submitting the documents to EDA and DWI, um, and moving forward with the project. So exciting news.
That's fantastic. Uh, any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the bid award and resolution number 2024-108.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the adoption of bid award and resolution 2024-108. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, next under new business is the real property surplus.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Lee Barbie, deputy town manager. Uh, Chief Rains stepped out, but I want to thank him for allowing me to do this presentation to you tonight. There's a little history with it that I'll bring to your attention. Uh, when I became fire chief in 1991, one of my first tasks was to order a replacement engine. And so that, that was a challenge at the time with us being a volunteer department figuring out the route we were going. We had just been, uh, before I started my tenure, we, we had been denied an order of an engine, so we had to start a process over. But this engine that I'm presenting to you tonight was one of my first tasks, first order that we did for a replacement engine. Uh, it was the first four-door cab engine we had, enclosed cab. So it started that trend, trend of how the fire department started changing over the years. But in the last year or so, this engine has been deemed surplus. After Chief Rains come here, they started the, the, uh, decommission of it and, uh, sent it over to Public Works. Public Works, um, used it for a while, um, helping with special events, doing the water barricades and things, but they have since transitioned and changed it to, uh, a skid unit that's on one of their trucks. So like I say, this, this engine has served us for over 30 years. As it comes to a close, when I found out that, um, that, that Public Works was looking to put it on, uh, the surface block, I made a comment to them that, um, during my tenure, one of the first fire trucks that, that this truck replaced was put on surplus and I watched it out in the parking lot and sold for $500. But there was a lot of blood and sweat, tears that was put into that truck because we rebuilt it. We bought it in 74, but in the, I don't know, mid, mid eighties, we, a group of us got together, tore it apart, rebuilt it. And that was before the 19, uh, the NFPA standards that we had to adhere to. We rebuilt that truck and, um, and it lasted us for a while, but that one went to a local farm here in the, in town, in the, in the district, $500. And I said at the time, I didn't want, I didn't want to see another fire truck that had value and use be put on the surface block. So this engine here, um, I put the word out, I had our fleet mechanic call our insurance agent, VFIS agent. He's known all over the state, you know, there's a lot of departments in need. We found out that, um, Marshallburg Fire Department in Carter County with a population just over 450, I believe it is, was in need of a fire engine. So I said, that's the ticket. We need to bring it to council. We need to contact them, see if they need it. They sent us a letter. I think you have a copy of the letter that they provided. Uh, they only have two apparatus, an engine and a, and a tanker, and theirs are a 1997 and a 2001. So they don't have new equipment. They might do the best they can. So our request is to donate this truck to them. If you, if you agree to do this, this will be the fourth fire truck that was in my tenure, coming out of my tenure and starting Chief Rains, that we have donated to other needy departments. Um, um, Tim Robbins spoke to the fire chief in, um, Marshallburg last week. He offered at that time, if we felt the need was to send it west to the, um, western counties, we could do that. But my commitment and Tim's commitment to him was, we know they were in need. Um, we know the coast has had their problems in the past too. So it's still our preference to, uh, if you approve it, to donate this truck to Marshallburg Fire Department. And I'll be glad to answer any questions, but again, I do appreciate Chief Rains allowing me to make this one last, um, request to the council. And then I think he's got a number that he'll be bringing to you soon, um, to help another entity out.
Questions or comments?
I'd just like to thank you for bringing this opportunity to us. I think all of us, um, in our community and all over the state want to help the western part of the state in any way we can. And if this, this can be a small part of that, I think it's a great idea. Thank you, Lee.
This one's going east. I know, I, I, I've been following the western part. I know David has. There's been a lot of help throughout the nation and throughout North Carolina. There's already been trucks that's, has been sent to the west. This one, you know, Carter County, I, I think they're in need. Um, just to give you a little background also, um, bad tornadoes come through years ago and one of the trucks we donated was to Bertie County. That area was, was kind of wiped out. They had to rebuild. Um, the other truck that we, one of the other trucks we donated was, um, yeah, um, Robinson County down below Lumberton. They had, they got flooded out with Matthew. So, you know, we're familiar with things that, that these people's come through.
Yep. I think it's. Mr. Casey.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I was gonna say yes because you dressed up so nice tonight. Sir. I, I was just gonna say yes because you dressed up so nice tonight. Everything else, but I mean, it does serve a good cause, um, to a smaller community. So, you know, that's another reason as well.
Thank you.
You know, and for me, it really is, uh, it goes back to the word in, in their title, Marshallburg Volunteer Fire Department. And I remember when Clayton was Volunteer Fire Department. And we know what it's like to have less and need more. And I'm happy that we're going to be able to provide or help that community provide the level of service they deserve, even at 450 residents. I think it's a great idea and a great repurposing for a vehicle that has been in a lot of service for the town of Clayton.
You know, one of the things, so a lot of things didn't get out publicly years ago, but I remember when Larry Castleberry was chief and then I remember when I became chief, we went through a lot of tough times. Uh, we started, our budget was less than $30,000 at that time, but we had a lot of neighboring departments. Um, I had a lot of fire chiefs that I had a relation. I had a lot of fire chiefs that I had relationships with. We were given a lot of things. We were given a lot of support when we were in bad times back then. So I think it's good that we've been able to pass it on.
Yeah, but y'all sold a lot of chicken plates back in the day, too.
A lot.
All right. Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2024-106.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of Resolution 2024-106. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving along with staff reports, beginning with the Town Manager.
Mayor, Council, just appreciate the support right there. Now, as you noted, there's a lot of communities in need west, they're still, they're still trying to recover, so the town has continued to offer resources. We have now been requested, had any additional requests as of late, but we will continue to update you if we are asked to send anybody. I want to give you one quick update on a outgoing project that the town's been working on. Our communications department's been working with the county and NC DOT regarding the renaming of the roads. Both, if you recall, NC 42 West is being rebranded, was being renumbered by NC DOT to NC 36. As part of that, the town and the county voted to name that stretch of road Veterans, Veterans Parkway moving forward, excuse me. The other road was 70 Business, since there will no longer be a 70 bypass, because that is now Interstate 42, 70 Business will drop the bus and just be 70 again. So as part of that process, the town and the county agreed to name that roadway Clayton Boulevard. Those two naming efforts, obviously there's a lot that has to go on. There are several, well, upwards of a few thousand between us and the county properties that need to be notified and be able to change their addresses. The good news is their numbers will not change, but they will have to update from insert number NC 42 to insert number Veterans Parkway, et cetera. So, right now, the go-live date, if you will, for the post office to be able to change that date will be February 10th. We will be working over the next couple of months to get the word out. We've got some mailers that'll be going out and some individual businesses particularly that we do intend to go talk to, to make sure that they're in full understanding, but also there will be a website, that'll be a joint town and county effort to make sure that anybody along that stretch of road that has any questions can hopefully get the information that they need right at their fingertips or, you know, on the webpage. So, more to come on that, but just did want to give you, the plan right now is February 10th would be the official date that the road naming will change. So about a week in advance of that, a week to two weeks in advance of that, town signage as well as NC DOT signage will start being installed with the official date being February Last but not least, I was gonna ask Courtney Tanner to maybe step up real quick. I know several of you have had an opportunity to meet her thus far, but wanted to go ahead and officially introduce Courtney Tanner, our new Deputy Town Manager over the Community Development Department. Courtney comes to us with over 20 years of experience as a planning, in the planning and development world, pretty much all right here in the Triangle and growing communities, most recently coming to us from Wake Forest. She is an AICP certified planner, has been about four, is this your fourth or fifth week now?
Fourth.
Fourth week. Who's counting, right? When you're having fun? Four weeks on the job, loving it every day. We're very fortunate to have Courtney coming in at this time. As many of you know, with the growth that we're seeing, our development services area, our community development area, excuse me, has been the kind of nucleus for all that growth to occur. So Courtney will be overseeing planning, engineering, building inspections, and the development services group that supports those three. So, wanted to say welcome to Courtney officially and give you a minute to say maybe not everything you want to say, but whatever you'd like.
Well, so first of all, Mayor, Council, thank you so much for this opportunity. I am excited to be here, probably more so than I realized at first, but everybody has been very warm and welcoming, which makes this place genuine, and so that has warmed my heart as I've been here over the last 3.1 weeks, but who's counting? But I'm excited to continue to deep dive and to learn more about Clayton, to learn more about the people that I work with, to learn more about each of you frankly, as well as the citizens. So again, thank you so much for this opportunity, and I look forward to working with each and every single one of you.
Awesome. Well, we're glad you're here. We're happy to have you be a part of our team. I say this to the vast majority of new hires, it really speaks highly of you to land this position with the Town of Clayton. It says that you bring a lot to the table to help our citizens and this council and our staff, so you should be really proud of your accomplishments and landing a job in Clayton, North Carolina, which is without question the best municipality in the state to work for, but we're, and I'm prejudiced, but we're happy that you're here, you know, and I think that historically, I guess certainly in Clayton, but really in any municipality, what you're going to be leading for the Town of Clayton is always a challenging aspect of municipal government, and, you know, I think it's equally as important to tell people what you can't do and to be able to say what you might consider is, and I think people have a huge appreciation for that.
Well, thank you. I also consider myself very lucky, so.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
One last item, because I know you guys have all had the dates circled on your calendar for a while, just a reminder that our Town Council retreat is next week on the 29th and 30th. We are still working out the final agenda items, but we do intend to get all that information to you in advance for some of the items and others that we'll be going over the days of, but just want to remind you, the 29th, 30th, a lot of work going into that from staff, so we're excited to be able to bring some new stuff to you, and that's it.
Thanks, sir. Town Attorney? Town Clerk?
No report.
Other staff? I will now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak? I'll turn it over to Council for comments. Mr. Casey?
This upcoming week, later this weekend, this weekend's the Harvest Festival. Obviously, everybody around the whole community gets excited and gets to look forward to that. One thing I want to thank this town staff for doing is, this, I don't know if this is going to be the first time, but the Town Council's going to have a booth at the Harvest Festival, so everybody in the community can hopefully come and visit our booth, have a chat with us if there's any, you know, concerns, questions. We love positive comments, too. Appreciate, like I said, appreciate the staff and their efforts, but just excited to have a Town Council booth and excited about the Harvest Festival this upcoming weekend.
Awesome. Anyone else? Mr. Sims?
Yes, I just want to take the time out to thank any and everyone that is on the town, our staff that had anything to do as far as getting the supplies and things that we needed down to western North Carolina, especially our police department. I think we sent some, correct me, some utility vehicles and things there, so big shout out to them. It just shows that we, you know, we pull together as a state of North Carolina, no matter if we're here on the east coast, it doesn't matter, we're still North Carolina, and we go to help out our brothers and sisters. So just shout out to all our staff and those who helped out with that.
Anyone else? All right. So with that, I will now entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the purchase of real property and to discuss a legal matter and get advice from the attorney.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Please clear the room.
Is there any other business to come before? Is there any other business to come before this council? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Good night.